I have a public hearing tonight. An exemption of real property taxes for real property owners of veterans who are in military service in the United States during the Cold War. And I open the floor to the public this time. There are no one wishing to address the board on this subject, I close the public hearing. Bid results, God memorial, slate, roof replacement. Board, you all have copies. Too much paperwork today. I think the bid was one bid. I don't know.
Is that right here, Jim?
The bid was received and opened by deputy clerk and librarian present. Jamison General Contractors, LCC Salem, New York, seventy-four thousand seven hundred. And from our contractors have reviewed the bid and say everything's in order and recommends that we award the bid to the bidder. And that's one thousand dollars more than the grant we got. So naturally, it's a good bid for us. We have the money in the main, the thousand dollars, we might just want to cover the other thousand dollars. So.
I'll put that part of the motion, that we accept the bid of seventy-four thousand seven hundred from the Jamison General Contractors to do the library move.
Moved by trustee justice, seconded by trustee bankers. Any discussion?
Do you know when they can do the work first?
He has to start before the first of October in the contract.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I'm trying to look for you to replace it with.
Slate.
Slate's on there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's quite a bit of damage there, Bob.
No, no, no.
It's just like your house.
He just asked what.
But it's like your house leaking. The longer it leaks, the more damage it's gonna do.
I just wanted to know if you go from slate to asphalt or something.
Okay, the motion has been made, seconded in all those in favor of both members, the same of mine.
Aye.
So opposed, motion carried. Ian Pegg, your guess. Okay, comments from the public? Open the floor for comments from the public at this time?
Yes, they're gonna cover ourselves, of course.
Did you wanna discuss my, our issue regarding the sub pumps into sewer lines now, or do you wanna do it on, during your?
You wanna discuss it, go ahead.
I saw the, I got the notice today, which I wanna thank everybody for getting onto this, seeing we've had so many problems over the summer. We were asking Brian earlier what the smoke test consisted of and how it works, and I think he explained it to Jim. I made some calls for myself to other villages to see when they have, you know, about the different ways they deal with this issue, with people being pumping their sub pumps into sewer lines. And one of them, I thought, which was a good idea because it's almost immediate rather than waiting, I don't know, has the smoke test been, first of all, has it been scheduled?
Two contractors that we're looking at.
Okay. In the meantime, we don't know how much rain, I mean, it's like tomorrow we could be getting another ton of it, but anyway. What I've been told is they do random checks, house to house, two people. They go house to house, random checks, nobody knows when they're coming or if they're coming. And they find those that are on the system hooked in, and they're told, they're given so much time to get off, and then they're checked to make sure that they are off. And if they're not off, they're given hefty fines. And they also, it's not just done once a year, I mean, it's done periodically, nobody never knows when they're gonna show up to check the basements. Because people can easily get off and then hook it back in after you're gone. So, and that's our concern. Because, I mean, I had enough damage in one night, where we had to pull it, again, we had to pull everything out, the carpets and everything, all the flooring in the two apartments. You know, and our tenants were, you know, had to stay elsewhere. Luckily, you know, we had room for them to stay somewhere, but.
Russia.
Oh, plus, you know, we lost, you know, some rent because of it, you know, and we had to make, you know, to keep our tenants from not moving. We had to compensate them for, you know, I mean, for putting them out. Twice, yeah, this happened twice in one week, seven days. It had happened earlier in the spring, and we had discussed it, and they said they were gonna do the testing, but nobody knew we were gonna have these bad storms, but. My, I guess I'm asking you now, can we get this done, get some kind of random check ahead of time, you know, before this test is done? Have people going door to door, have random checks to find out?
I don't believe it's legal to go in somebody's house.
Oh, that's the village, these villages do?
We're gonna have our turn to tell a story, because if you go in somebody's house and it's not running, I mean, it's really.
But if they're in our septic into the sewer lines and it's not running, they're causing damage.
But we still haven't taken care of the problem. We got all this water, and if you pump it out, pump it next door, pump it, so it really isn't taking care of the problem.
It's better being on somebody's lawn than in our residence.
Yeah, but when you pump water onto your lawn and it goes into the ground and comes back into your house, it's a constant, I mean, so, I mean, that's not taking care of the problem, I don't believe.
Well, if they are in, hooked up, it's illegal. Bottom line, it's illegal. They need to get off.
Yep.
And it's up to the village, I mean, I pay seven hundred dollars a month, water and sewer bill, you know, for my apartment buildings, and I don't feel I should have to have this fed back to me, none of the sewer. And, I mean, it was a mess.
What happens if we correct a problem and you still have a problem?
It's your problem, because that's a sealed system.
Water's backing up through the sewer lines.
Sewer lines.
Coming through the water.
No, no, but what I was saying, by people pumping water onto their lawns, you're constantly having that circulation. You're pumping too, there's too much water going into the septic system. So if you eliminate those problems and stuff, and we get a big flood.
We're talking two different issues, Brian.
Yeah.
You know, you're talking storm drain here, and then you're talking, you know, for runoff for your, you know, your sub pumps. Okay? People have to either go into storm drains, or if they don't have it provided, then, you know, people have to put it out somewhere else. They cannot be in the sewer lines. Bottom line.
Trying to look it up.
And the thing of it is, is, you know, it's getting the people that are illegally hooked in, because we're the one paying the price. And, you know, are, you know, I mean, are you gonna pay for the damages every time this happens? Are you gonna, you know, pay my rent? You know, that I'm gonna end up losing, if I lose tenants because of this?
I suppose.
I mean, in twenty-seven years we've owned it, Brian, this is the first year, so, and they did find a blockage, okay, and they did open it up. And, I mean, the same is, are all the lines, have they checked the lines?
Not to mention the expense of treating this water.
Yeah.
Brian was giving me some general ideas comparing if somebody pumped in or didn't pump in. Big, big difference here.
We'll pay.
A lot of money it's costing the taxpayer to pay for this.
That's right. And the thing of it is, it would only stand, be logical that nobody wants these people, we shouldn't be processing water that doesn't need to be processed.
Bottom line, it's against the law.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, I agree with you, I'm not.
But if other villages are able to go in at random, random checks, which they should be able to, I mean, after all, they're hooked into, they're, we are hooked into your system. You should be able to come in and find where the problem is coming from.
I'd like to have a lawyer answer that question, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
We have checked into it.
We have checked other villages, and that's what they do. And they don't tell the people, they just surprise and say, I'm here to check the basement, we've got problems.
But that is a legal issue.
It is legal, I understand that. But, again, this is other villages, and they seem to be able to do it with no problem and no issues. And, you know, and it is, it's issuing hefty fines to people that are hooked in, you know, you gotta give them reason to not go back into it.
We still haven't fixed the problem yet. We live right here at lake level, and there's, you know, so. No, but that is a sealed system, correct?
Yep.
Right.
Okay, sewer.
Yep.
That's it.
Right.
Sewer system.
Sewer. Not runoff water from somebody's sub pumps, you know, coming out of a basement, you know, from groundwater. You know, we're not hooked into it. Why should I be, why should I pay for the damages? And, you know, and end up with, you know, the big mess.
And it was a mess.
And it was a mess.
You probably can have it again, too, the way the weather looks, I mean, it could get worse again.
They should have it.
They should have it.
They shouldn't be pumping anywhere.
If you get these people off the system.
Right.
If I get groundwater in there from us, because, you know, that's my problem. Right now, this is a village problem. It's in your sealed system.
Right.
They should not be in there. I mean, the volume of water was just unbelievable. Not to mention, the sewer hole, the man's next to me, doing the last door, the sewer line, the sewer hole, it was just coming right over, there was like a lake in it, and it was going right down into the lake. Now, that's not healthy.
And it smelled sick.
Oh, yeah, yeah, once you get that, how you gonna get rid of it? Brian, what you're thinking?
So I had to go through the drain.
Well, we've been going around and seeing where our problem areas are, and a lot of our areas are the older developments. Like, Mountain View seems to have a separate storm drain to every house. They have, when they did Mountain View, they did a sanitary sewer and a storm drain line each house, so that kinda helps. Smith Street is an older development, Edgewater Drives, an older development. What we did today, we went around and started pulling manholes to see where our heaviest flows are, to see if it's coming from Smith Street, if it's coming from Edgewater. And that's where we're trying to document of what the flows are, if they're heavy, if they're light, where most of the water's coming from. And, I mean, we're looking at even the records of what the pumps are pumping, it's just, it's outrageous, the water that's coming from that south end. And even the north end, we're having problems on the north end also. It's all ionite that people are dumping, or there's open manholes, that's why we're going with the smoke tests. Today, we, you know, we're chasing lines that branch off, we don't know where they go. We're cameraing, trying to find out where they go. Why is there water coming out of them? We're blocking them off. For instance, like, the log cabin, I mean, that's on the south end. It seems to be shut right down, abandoned, we open those manholes up, we completely block those sewers right completely off. So we know there's no water coming from the lake, or coming from those buildings into our system. I mean, we're trying to look at every avenue, because there is a problem. And it is in the sewer law that we do have the authority to inspect those houses.
Thank you.
The sewer, the wastewater treatment chief, or myself, are the two people that are designated in the sewer law that says that we can inspect these residents. But what we're trying to do is find out where the flows are. Just a word of that we're smoke testing, we've been getting calls, well, what does that mean? You know, people are calling. Where, how can we get our sub pumps out of the sanitary sewer into the storm drain? People are calling already. I think a lot of it is notification, letting people know that we're there to help them, we'll help them tie into the storm drains, we need to get them off the sewer system.
Every new development now, we're going with a different system.
Yes. Every new development has a separate stormwater system and a separate sewer. For instance, when they did Champlain Street, we caught that in time where they actually tied a lot of those houses into the, into the storm drain. Because they were pumped, they didn't have no place to go. And it was a kind of an engineering mishap, that they didn't catch it in time. But the state worked with us, we got storm drains to the people's houses, and it helped.
Okay, now, the rest of that old streets in the village, in order to fix this problem, we have to dig them up and run a separate line?
No, a lot of them are available. There is storm drains or a ditching system which is available. It's to tap the storm drain and make provisions to extend them to the people who wants them. I mean, that would be at their expense, like, we do, just like a sewer connection, we do the tap, we put one length of pipe in toward your house, and you have to take it from there.
And I think that's probably where we're running into, the fact people don't wanna go to that expense, so that they find it easier just to tap into the sewer line instead. And it's not right. It's illegal, and it shouldn't be done.
Mine runs, mine runs down the side.
I mean, we've been, we've been out doing die testing and cambering, and we're trying to find the problems, but having so much rain at, so quick, yeah, there is a problem.
Tell us about it.
Yeah.
We're getting it all.
I mean, we're really noticing it this year because of our, of, number one, we had such a hard winter with all the snow, you know, the high waters in the spring.
Yep.
And, number two, with the rainstorms we've been getting, it's, it's flat flooding. Wherever you look, the roads are like rivers.
The people that are trying to save their basements, don't get me wrong, but.
They are.
But like you said, by pumping into the sewer line, it's coming back into people's residents.
But I think, I think with, with the weather conditions that we've been having, a lot of these sub pumps are working on overtime. They're really filling our system, where we're really, well, people are really noticing it.
Right.
And we have manholes out there that are floating, the metal covers.
Oh, yeah.
It's just.
Train next door.
Train next door, right?
It's just amazing. I mean, that's a lot of pressure, a lot of hydro.
Around the, my neighbor's manhole, it's all, you know, like, from sewer.
I had checked this morning, and ours in my driveway was three quarters full. When I checked it the night, it was probably eight full. So it went down that much in a day.
But those pumps are pumping over a million a day. That's a lot of water.
And not, and it's not necessary. I mean, you know.
I know that's it.
The taxpayers are paying for this, and if the system fails.
I know. About a few years ago, we put in from the south pumping station, a separate line that goes to the wastewater plant. It used to, water came to the north together. And we thought it would make a difference, it doesn't, we're still getting too much water.
We've, we've been making provisions to separate this. I mean, that was a major project that they did that year, and it did help for a while, but it just seems like we're back to.
But getting back, getting back to, and I know you guys are working on this, and don't get me wrong, I understand that, and it takes time, but what, the suggestion I had, because I checked with other villages, and you said, you, two of you are, by law, had the authority to go in, and I think that should be done immediately to get, to start getting this.
The problem is, is a lot of people aren't as understanding as what you are. I mean, when you knock on somebody's door and say, I'm here to check, you know, see where your sub pump is, they're not as understanding as you are. I'm telling you.
Well, you can always have a copy of the law right in your hand, you know, the book showing that you've got the authority to go in and inspect. I mean, you know.
Yeah. We try to be nice about it with sending the letters out first.
Right.
Notifying people that we are gonna do smoke testing, and.
And like this, what I, the one of the villages that I spoke with, they said they go, they don't tell, they just pick random streets. And, you know, not all the same time, you know, different, different areas, different times, and they go in and check. And, and like I said, they're given extra time, if they, and if they go back to check to make sure that they've been removed, if they haven't been removed, then come the fines, until they're removed. And it should be hefty enough. And maybe this is something the village needs to do, to show them, you know, that, to get people off. I'm just trying to get every way possible to get people off so that we're not damaged every time we have a torrential downpour.
What about the check valve, that, we talked about that when.
The check valve, I checked into that also.
Don't work.
It won't work, because.
On that particular, on, on sanitary source. You got all that force going down the sanitary source, and you got a check valve in your line, you wanna flush your toilet, and it's gotta push against that pressure that's there, and ain't gonna happen.
And if anything.
It's gonna come out in the lowest point. It'll come out the toilets in the bottom floor, if the top floors keep flushing and running showers.
It's, and the thing of it is, is like, even during normal use, if something gets caught in there, and it prevents that flap from closing, is defeating the purpose, it's gonna come back in. And then, also, if something gets caught, and it keeps building up, building up, and if anybody has a snake, whether it be us or you, then, and it breaks, then we're digging it up again. And it's, it's not recommended by anybody that I've talked to. They don't ever do what they said.
It'd be different if you're on a single-family land, but a multi-family, like, they're, they're saying, what, six units on, on that one, on your main building?
Mm-hmm.
You have six units and three floors.
You know, it's funny, it doesn't affect the back one, though?
It doesn't?
The back, the back building?
Well, the, the least amount of resistance, that's where it's gonna go.
We've got four-inch line that runs in the south in my place, all the way around.
That back building's uphill, isn't it?
It's what?
It's, it goes up a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the, I think the night of the storm, I think, I said, you heard a little gurgling, but, you know, so, but at least it didn't reach back in, thank God.
You got the name of these people that do this smoke testing, that you said?
Pardon?
You got the name of this firm that comes in and does smoking testing of individuals?
No, I didn't know, I didn't talk to anybody about that, I was asking the villages how they, you know, what they do to check whether or not their residents are hooked into the sewer lines, and they said they do random checks, they go door to door. And they go down and visibly check themselves in the basement. They haven't, they, and somebody did mention to me about sometimes the smoke testing being not a true reading because of possible dirt in the system or something, and I didn't get into it with them, I just wanted to.
Is there a big charge for that?
Oh, yeah.
For these guys to come in?
Yeah.
And there's two outfits you're looking at?
We're looking at two different outfits right now.
Do you think it would be, I mean, yeah, I mean.
Do they do the whole village?
Yeah.
They'll, they'll start with the problem areas.
Okay.
Problem areas, and then, maybe, and then in the future, I mean, then do the, you know, door to door check?
Yep.
We know you've got the authority to do it.
And you see the smoke coming out the cellar, you know there's a problem.
See, back years ago, they used to put the footer drains and everything into them. Like a lot of these places where you'll see a pipe come up alongside their wall, and they have their E's down into them.
Yeah, yeah.
Back years ago, you could do that and get away with it, but the smoke testing is gonna tell us if there's smoke coming out alongside your foundation, that we know that you're tied into our sanitary sewer. I mean, it's gonna be money well spent.
You're gonna see smoke coming out of the.
Well, it's gonna save us, it should save us money by time if we get this corrected.
On the vent pipe.
By getting.
Yeah, 'cause that's an open vent right to the, right.
I sure do.
That's legal.
But look at the money we're gonna be saving by, you know, the taxpayers by getting them off the system, you know, 'cause we're not processing all this added water.
Water.
But still get back to what I said, though, all this water is sitting in people's backyards, and you're passing it to the next one, and, what?
Right, and you'd rather see it in somebody's lawn than in, in our residence. That bottom line.
I'd rather get rid of that. You know, I'd like.
Well, hopefully we can tie them.
What do you suggest, Brian? I don't know, I really don't know, Jim, I just know that on Pratt Street, when you start pumping the water out, all it does is go to the next house, to the next house, and all you're doing is just shuffling the deck.
You gotta find a source. There is, I'm sure there's storm drains on Pratt Street.
Well, but there's underground springs, though.
We have it on Phillips Avenue Springs, too.
Yep.
You know, we have our sub pump, and we, we pipe it down to a storm drain.
Yep.
We are gonna take a proactive look at anyone that wants to tie into the storm drain, and we work with them. We'll do the tap for them, we'll get them started.
Good.
Give them advice if they have to have it.
Good.
I'm just a little nervous because of, we've had so much rain, and, you know, I have gotten the apartments back, and we're just about completed, we got a few more days of work in there, but we've been since, what, almost two weeks? You know, that we have been in, you know, in a total mess.
Yes.
And.
And not to mention worrying about every time it springs.
Every time it rains, you know, and, yeah, you know, and the stress of it.
Yep.
Um, never having done this in twenty-seven years, all of a sudden, you know, three times this year.
Boy, what's that, do with the weather, too? I looked at it tonight before I came to the meeting.
When the lake was at its highest, the lake level was not the problem, it was coming through our sewer, the people were pumping out.
Just the volume.
Yes.
Yes.
But basically, I'm asking about doing that random check, too. And, you know, even in the future.
We'll sit down with.
If we see an increase of volume of water coming down.
Thursday, Doug is coming, so, Doug Ferris, engineer, we'll bring it up with him, what he says, too.
All right.
I gather this won't drag, right? No.
No, no.
We're trying to dig action. Good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, well, anybody else?
Go ahead, Jim.
I, I got a lengthy one.
Oh, okay, well, I got a short one. Carol's gonna read a couple of letters tonight that Steve and I have submitted. Are we gonna be able to address those when you read them, or do I have, do we have to do it now?
We do when we, the letters are.
When you read them?
Okay. Okay.
All right, Bob. Anybody else? I wanna talk about, Bob, I'm gonna talk about the water, water in the sewer debt. I spoke to you about two months ago, and contacting Pfizer, and you said you were working on a letter with your lawyer to address Pfizer on the debt for the water tower and the sewer. It's over two or three million dollars. Has anything progressed tonight?
Yes, we have a complete report.
Pardon?
We have a complete report ready to go.
Okay. Have you scheduled a meeting with Pfizer?
No.
When are you planning on doing that?
When I can find somebody to talk to up there. They're scarce and hard to find.
Well, there's, there's one man up there, I know, he's, he's the manager.
Yeah.
And he contacted Pfizer officials and Wyeth, and.
It will be handled, Robert. And we didn't spend the money for, we have not spent that money, but that report used to sit there.
Well, I've asked this for two years now, and my second phase of this report is, I think, as I've asked before, I think you should have a manpower reduction in the water plant by one man, hear me out. And take that money, like I said, in the budget time, and apply it towards your, your debt, which, which. Which we have to pay, what time of year we have to pay that? Is it yearly payment?
Twice a year.
Twice a year?
Twice a year.
And then you have to re, you know, negotiate the interest rates pretty soon, right?
No.
Or is that set?
That's already set.
That's all set?
That's set.
Okay.
They're twenty and thirty-year issues.
Okay, I just thought there was a, the interest had to come up, renegotiate the interest.
No.
And for your information, no matter what money we get from Wyeth, we cannot apply it against the law. That's the law of the state, we've already checked into that. We have to pay that debt until it comes due. Am I right, Arson?
There's no prepayment clause, correct.
No prepayment.
Okay. So you, what you do, you set it aside in reserve, and they.
That's where it's gonna go.
Okay, that, let's, let's explain things here.
That's where it has to go.
That's where it's gonna go.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I have no objections to that. But I'd like to readdress the, uh, reduction of staff. Back to work, uh, when I was mayor. You have more people now than when I was mayor.
Well, to answer that question, sir, you know that that plant is not automatic anymore. It's antiquated, and none of that stuff works. And if you shut those pumps off, talk to the chief water plant operator, tell you the hell he has to go through to get them back on. And the health department fully recommends that we do not take any shifts off that water, water plant.
Your health department, I mean...
Look, don't say you...
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into that.
Bob, they are law, and we have to abide by it. And if you think that I have not been hard on the health department, you've got another thing coming.
Well, I'll tell you one, one thing, George.
John's also the engineer that was at Times, he didn't wanna come up here and talk to me 'cause he said he's a hard-nosed SOB.
Well, I just want the people to know, if nothing is done and Pfizer pulls out...
It ain't gonna make any difference in this right now.
Yes, it is, it'd make a difference to me, a ratepayer, to be around two hundred and fifty dollars a month you wanna pay per unit. Think of that, folks.
No.
Two hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty dollars, I can't afford that.
How'd you get your fingers?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, where, where?
Where'd you get your fingers?
Well, get your calculator up, two million dollars, plus the interest. And, and if Pfizer has no money getting, you're getting any money from Pfizer, it gotta come from us. But right now, there are forty percent of capacity, and you gotta own for a hundred. So where's that money coming? Coming from? You gotta start thinking, folks, gotta start thinking.
Bob, we're in for some tough times here in the world.
I, I don't know that.
I mean, I'll make this prediction, next year, there'll be less people working for the village than there is this year.
I think, I think we should go and talk to Janet Dupree, the state senators, Eddie Little, no, relax, George.
Bob, I have, I have had a meeting, we should go with Eddie Little.
Mayor, we're...
I tell you what, George.
I mean, you come in, you come in here and act like I, this board has done nothing.
I didn't say that.
Oh, you're gonna do the right damn...
You don't let us know what's going on.
I really have a big secret here?
No, there's nothing in the paper, I don't know.
That's not my fault.
No.
They get the minutes, they know everything that goes on. If they don't wanna report it, that's the practice law.
Well, people should know, you sent a letter out for the, for the, uh, the water going to the sewer, why can't you send a letter out to let us know what's going on?
Costs money.
Costs money today.
Well, it's a problem. We haven't got a problem yet that way.
I mean, I think we've got a serious problem here. And I'd like to know the people to hear about this.
Well, in a few minutes, you're gonna hear something more, the drink of like...
And another thing, um, last night was very disturbed. To see one of your water plant people go to a local store on, with a, uh, water plant truck and buy lottery tickets on time. I think you should start checking into that. Amen.
Thank you, Robert. Anybody else? Close this section of the meeting, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, August fifteenth. Do you all have copies, Ford? Uh, is there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of August fifteenth.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Becker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your majority, by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, bills, you all have copies of the bills. Is there any additions or additions, Arson?
We have one deletion tonight, it's duck out of parts for eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Becker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your majority, by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, correspondence?
Okay, the first item I have is a, a letter addressed to Tom Longe. Um, my name is Lynn Malek, I am an RN with hospice of Washington County in Maryland. I wanted to thank you for being an angel to my patient William and his wife Mabel the weekend of August twelfth through the fourteenth. They came in on the train, immediately met you, you helped them to the motel, got them settled, arranged transportation for their anniversary dinner, and assisted them in getting back to the train station. Mabel was not one to accept help easily, and I am glad that taking no as an answer was not accepted. Your compassion and care allowed both Mabel and William to make a memory that will forever be in their minds and hearts. Thank you, thank you. Sincerely, Lynn Malek, RN. It's from hospice of Washington County. Apparently Tommy helped them. Um, this afternoon, I received two letters in from Jerry. Uh, the first one's from Seminole Champlain Center Stage, uh, to the village of Rosquante, mayor and trustees. The Friends of the Stage Committee is requesting permission to use the stage located at Civic Center for entertainment during the summer of two thousand and twelve. We are also requesting that we be able to hold some of, or all the events inside the Civic Center in case of inclement weather, and that the fee of three hundred and fifty dollars for nonprofits for the center be waived. Please let us know as soon as possible, permission will be granted as we are in the process of preparing an application to be submitted to the North Country Cultural Center for the Arts for a New York State Council of Arts grant. Last year, we received two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which made our summer very successful, along with help from the village and stewards, thanks to both. We had eleven weeks of entertainment, plus the Fourth of July weekend scheduled. One straw haters concert was canceled due to weather, and the antique car toy was canceled by the North Country Plastique Chamber of Commerce, so we canceled Split Rock. Attendance at each concert ranged from seventy to over two hundred and fifty. The residents of Sunmount came each week, these concerts were all free and open to the public. The Friends of the Stage are getting free quotes for the front door, which are between five thousand seven hundred and five thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, installed with automatic opener. Electric cookup will need to be done by the village employees. The Friends of the Stage have raised four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and are requesting that the village transfer the balance of the funds budgeted for entertainment, thirteen hundred and fifty dollars, for the two thousand and eleven, to be used to purchase the door, and it will be installed before winter. Uh, the Friends of the Stage will continue to fundraise for the benefit of the stage. We would like to express a big thank you to Mike O'Brien, Ray, and the Codies for all their help this summer, we really appreciate, and this is from Jerry Fabro.
Can I make a comment? Can I do that now?
Uh, or?
Jerry wants to talk about...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm having trouble hearing.
I have the same problem, George, I totally understand. Um, the overhead door quote that we got, which was the lowest one of the three, um, they came and they re-quoted today, and they dropped it another hundred and...
Hundred and eighty plus.
Hundred, yeah. So their quote now is at fifty-five, twenty. And tomorrow, I'll make copies of these at the village, the three of them, and give them to our sen. But we'd also like, uh, Brian or somebody who's more qualified than us to take a look at them, because I don't know anything about an overhead door, so... But, uh, but overhead door came in, uh, dropped it even more because they have been so successful with working with the village. So that puts us even closer to our goal.
What's the board's decision?
I think we should allow them to do it.
Make a, you have to make a motion, sir.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll put that in form of a motion, and that, do we allow the Friends of the Stage Committee, they have permission to use the Civic Center for two thousand and twelve, will waive the fee like we do for nonprofit, like we've done in the past? Tomorrow, and so I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Becker. Is there any more discussion or discussion?
Brian, is this apart from the, uh, transfer of the funds to next year's budget for the remainder of the door? Is that gonna be a separate motion?
I think that should be separate.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by your majority, by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Did you wanna do the second motion?
Yeah, in the second motion, I'll put this in form of a motion that, uh, uh, basically, uh, we're gonna take the money, we'll have a rollover of... Are we gonna do this on the quotes, or are we gonna do this on the, uh, the rollover in the money? Let's see, just...
On the quotes for what?
Uh, the overhead door, that's the...
We have, that's our money.
We don't need to act on that.
No, we don't have to act on that.
You have to act on transferring eight hundred and fifty dollars from account seventy-five, sixty point four, which is the other performing arts culture, and five hundred dollars from the band concert, concert account to help pay for the, the door.
Yeah, I'll put that...
Which is the thirteen fifty.
I'll put that in form of a motion, that we take the balance that's in the accounts, thirteen hundred and fifty dollars, and roll it over to the other. So I'll put that in form of a motion.
One second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Becker. Is there any discussion?
Um, I said, so that thirteen fifty would be reduced by the one eighty if they end up going with the low quote? Would that be your understanding, Arson?
I think it depends on how much they, uh, they donate to the village.
We're gonna donate, we have money, the Friends of the Stage has money in an account that's separate from, we are going to donate to the village for the door.
Forty-three hundred and something.
Forty-three hundred and sixty dollars?
Whatever, yeah.
Well, that's sixteen hundred and something that we already have there, that little construction fund. Plus, we've got twenty-seven hundred, I think. The Friends have twenty-seven, about twenty-seven hundred, that we will give you what it needs to do the door. Right?
So we're just basically transferring it during this current budget year from one account to the other?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion?
Brian, any problem with the electric hookup?
No, no problem.
Okay.
Any other discussion, Ford?
Yeah, good. Oh, George, somebody else?
George, I don't mean to jump in, I just wanna let you know, the door companies have asked that if they go along with putting the door on, that the village could use their truck to lift it up because of the heft of it. I don't know, that's something the board might wanna discuss.
Talk to that man sitting over there.
If that would, you know, when they're available, and when it can be done. Only 'cause of the heft of it.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Who's gonna keep charge of the automatic opener?
I keep one here, probably one in the stage. Always have one here, in case there's a backup, and then...
Well, and we're, technically, we're not the only ones that can use the stage. Anybody in the community that wants to use it just has to call the office and schedule it.
No, and it's not a problem, I just think it's, sometimes it's easier to iron these things out ahead of time.
So, really, there should be one here. Mike, Mike O'Brien should have one here in case...
The other one has to go in the office.
Maybe they wanna get in for something, yeah.
Some, some organization wants to use it, they can go in the village office and sign it out?
That's true.
Mike O'Brien probably should be the one, seeing how he's right here.
He's not here every day. Yeah, two, one in the office, like you say, one here.
And then will we have to insure this door?
No, that's part of the building, part of our insurance. Part of the building.
Actually, it should help our insurance, 'cause it should, safety and, you know, should, you know, shouldn't be any damage. I mean, we're not having damage now, right, since we got the cameras and stuff?
Not that we know of.
We had that one incident, we took care of it, we had it in the cameras, and I think the word got out that there's cameras here in the village and we're using them.
Yeah.
It was money well spent.
Any other discussion, Ford? If not, all those in favor, vote by your majority, by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay. The next letter I have is from, um, Jerry Fabro, and from Montgomery Hall's Hook and Ladder. The Fourth of July committee is requesting that the village install an additional electrical panel near the northwest corner of the tennis court. This will make it much easier to place vendors and others on the field so that they can be better spread out and won't have to have electrical cords across the walking path. We are also requesting that you take a look at the covert along the path and change the way it is installed. An increasing number of vendors and entertainers drive down the path to the stage and pavilion. We would like to prevent someone from driving off the side, it might also help with the drainage to the west side. That's from Jerry again.
Mr. Duncan, what do you have to say about that? It's gonna fall on your shoulders. Do you see any problems, Eric?
Oh, no.
Did you hear what I said?
One, yeah.
He does this frequently.
Yeah, I know. Oh, about the...
I'm not really looking for an answer for that tonight, I, it was just, just a recommendation, something we'd like you to consider before next summer.
We'd like to budget that for next year, too.
It would help a lot with the Fourth of July, especially 'cause there's so many people that drive back and forth and...
All right, that was my information, only...
Excuse me, ma'am.
Just not forget about it till spring.
I'm, I'm, I'm done with the letters, but you didn't vote on the local law. I just wanna remind you that.
On the what?
The local law.
Oh, I knew that.
Okay, so you don't forget.
Let me make a motion first.
Did you get a letter?
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the local law, and afford the exemptions for the real property taxes. For owned by the veteran, who's owned, rented for military service in, uh, the whole war.
Well, they can act on it the next time.
One second.
What is it?
That's the second, bumper, or, uh, trustee Becker. Is there any discussion?
We had talked last time about just making sure that, so that people who are interested in applying know it applies to them, in terms of dates, the...
I don't have the dates.
So is it something, though, that we could at least have, get and have in the office, so that if anyone is in any doubt? I just wanna make sure that people were able to take advantage of this, know that they can, I guess.
I'm looking to see if we, we don't have that local law.
I have.
I could have it there.
We always send everybody right to, uh, TM up in Champlain, when anybody has any questions on anything like that anyways, but... And I, I don't know, I don't think there's anything written.
Yeah, there's nothing in the local law, and I know we talked about it at the last meeting when we were establishing the, the public hearing, but, um...
Friday, Friday, I'll check with the, the exceptionist office.
And just to be sure, so if someone has a question, they know whether or not they're able to take advantage of that. So, I just think it should be clear, that's all. That's it.
No, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by your majority, by.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Report of the mayor and the board trustees. First thing on the agenda is to request permission to sign the contract with Doug Ferris, our engineer. Apparently, we forgot to do this over here. You all get, you all got a copy of the agreement.
And this includes the, the, what, the amount that is budgeted for? Arson, we, we have certain amount budgeted for Doug for the year?
It's twenty thousand dollars budgeted.
Twenty-two, was it? How much was it, Arson, you didn't hear?
Twenty thousand.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, allow the mayor to sign the agreement with Doug Ferris for the, uh, engineering services.
Second.
Okay. Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Becker. Is there any other discussion? If not, uh, vote by your majority, by, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next thing on my agen, agenda is a uh, notice of a public hearing formed in September in the New York Power Authority on hydro rates. And, uh, the one will be, in this area will be held Thursday, September twenty-second, second, at two PM to six PM at the Saint Lawrence FDR Project at Hopkins Pond Road in Lucino. And what it is, is that we're getting an increase in power rates in the hydro, the preference power, to the municipal alleys. And the Power Authority has recommended this three years ago, and the municipal electric uh, got them to back down on it, and we knew it was gonna come up to be an issue. So, that, we are going to see an increase. I don't, I don't, I don't, no, no rates included here.
No.
Another sign of the times, I guess. There's nothing, yeah. Man, wait, that's for information, anybody wanting to attend, or want it, want to attend. And I think somebody from the board should be there, I intend to be there. Okay, declare, uh, declare the old computer in my office surplus. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made, and second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your majority, by.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And, next thing on my agen, agenda, discussion of some pump, open to the water sanitary sewer. I think we beat that one already.
Yeah.
George, can I bring up one thing?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Young has some very valuable information here.
Um, Mr. Young has some very valuable information here. On, on, uh, April 26th of...
Brian, I got the, it's right here.
What, Dave? Want me to give you a copy of it?
Yeah.
But there is some good information here of, of a survey form, something that we should look at.
We're gonna talk about that Thursday.
Okay.
I haven't even had a chance to look at this, so we could bring it tonight.
Oh, you brought it tonight, too? Well, I was just reading through...
You guys have, uh, see, that's, trove, it's too big, John.
But Dave Supernod did a, quite a good job here on this, uh, this hotel that he...
Yeah.
They must have sent out all the residents, and I think we should copy it, or tweak it a little bit and do the same.
Very good. Okay, next thing on my agenda is to authorize the court to go out to bid for fire alarm equipment for the Public Works Building and the Public Works Office.
Village Office?
No, not the village.
It's the village today, I'm not...
You already got it, or unless you want to take off, or you got it.
That's what you told me to do.
This came about, and how does our foot clerkage is beyond me. When we got millions, millions of dollars worth of equipment sitting in the garage, and if something should happen down there with no fire alarm, uh, we could be in darn need like the, the town of Danmore, replacing everything. So, we got the quote from Hunter, but we're gonna have to go out to bid. And it is a budgeted item.
Oh, yes, okay. Okay, so I'll put that in form of a motion, authorize the court to go out to bid for the fire alarm equipment for the Public Works Building and the village office.
Not the village.
Oh, not the village, sorry.
Public Works.
Public, sorry, yeah, yeah.
I'll say that. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And I'm requesting, uh, Executive Secretary to discuss possible litigation.
Second.
Moved by myself, seconded by trustee Penfield, will call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
And the mayor will... The last thing on my agenda is, I have an award for a young man in this, this room. Artan. Got a piece of paper for you. Anyway. It's a 25-year certificate from the Conference of Mayors, 25 years in office. Trustee Jefferson, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Vers. I'm gonna try to make this as brief as possible. I'm gonna discuss the court upgrade. I spent quite a bit of time working on this, and, uh, talked to Tony, talked to the judge, talked to Brian, talked to Mike O'Brien, I mean, just, there's quite a few people. This is what I'm recommending for the village, that we keep the court clerk's office upstairs for now. If a handicapped person needs to see the clerk, and they have to talk to somebody in person, we'll allow them to go into the mayor's office to conduct their business. It doesn't happen very often, but we have to be able to let these people discuss issues and drive it. Okay, so we'd use the mayor's office as a backup. We need to install a phone line for credit cards and a panic button at the village office. So that is not really gonna be a lot of money, and it's all part of the Disabilities Act and all things that, within the next year, we're gonna have to comply with a lot of these. We can apply for a waiver, but we'll see how things go in a year from now, we're gonna re, re-address this. As far as the courtroom, we're gonna, uh, install a panic button here, put another phone line in for credit cards, and modify this building, so when we bring prisoners in here that are handcuffed and they need to remain handcuffed, they can be cuffed to the floor. It's a safety issue, uh, we really haven't addressed this, but now we know with the laws changing that these people have to be, uh, held under security. We'd like to replace this steel door with an insulated door, install a light outside, and a canopy over the outside door. So prisoners would be coming through this door, and they wouldn't go through the, uh, the arena. Outside, we put, we paint part of the area, and we have three parking lots, one for the judge, one for the clerk, and one for the state police. We'd like to get three new tables for up here, two tables for out here, for the attorneys, three legal-sized four drawer cabinets for the court clerk, and a sign that says at the village office, "Court clerk is upstairs, if you need to speak with her, speak with somebody at the front desk," so, basically. So, I don't really want to spend a bunch of money, because we don't know what's gonna happen. There's a grant that's available, with that, that we have about 10 more days to put in for it, and with the board's approval, I'll do the paperwork and put in for these things. If we get them paid for, we can go ahead and do them. If we don't get them paid for, then we'll go back to Plan B, which is do a little bit every year to see that we comply with the rules, ask for a waiver, and hope for the best. So that's basically what I have to report on the court, the upgrade on the court. If you agree tonight, I have a copy of a resolution, it basically says that the board of Rosas Point wants to apply for grant money to assist in the operation of the Justice Court. It could be as much as $30,000. I've just, in the process of getting the rest of the figures together, we're gonna submit the application and hope for the best. And that's all I have to report on the court.
I think it sounds like an excellent plan, Brian.
So, okay, so give me the, uh, I'll put that in form of a motion, that I go, I'll proceed with the grant application, and we'll let the cards fall where they fall.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, uh, the second item on my agenda is selling water to the town of Champlain. I'm just gonna speak briefly on this, and, uh, within the next two years, we know that the water and sewer customers, the revenue is gonna drop in the village. So, we're looking for ways to raise the revenue in the village, other sources of income. I want to keep the jobs, but I don't want the rates to go out of proportion. So, we're looking to try to sell water to the town of Champlain, and hopefully, if it works out, where we can sell them water, eventually, we're gonna take their sewer. So if we send them water and get their sewer back, we can make money, and make up for some of the economic shortfalls that we're having from the plant closing. So, it's, I, the way I see it, it's better for the village to take less money per thousand and have them sell it to Champlain, and it's better to take less money, but still get some revenue, because when the revenue dries up, it's, it's gonna be tough here for the water and sewer. We're not gonna sugarcoat it, we're just gonna tell you the way it is, it could get really tough in the village. So we've worked with trustee Cooper, they're trying to apply for a grant in Champlain to get their water system upgraded. We've got the capacity to supply it to them, and, and I really think it's very important, if we don't do this now, it's never probably gonna get done. And it might take five years for it to get done. Trustee Cooper's put a lot of time in, and if you have something to add to this done, could you do it at this...